Call this meeting to order. This is a commission meeting of October 25th, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center in the Commissioner Meeting Room on One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Get him on my silence and shoot for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the forge of public statements pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, add a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 as been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. It is also posted on a bulletin board maintaining an Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. This time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is the approval of agenda. We need to amend the agenda tonight to table item number 17 to discuss an executive session. We will also be adding an item for discussion, executive session under seven, which would be the food pantry. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. Number six, proclamations, certificates, and presentations. We have none tonight.
We have, well, there's three, but they're not going to be presented tonight yet.
Right, you want me to read them? I guess I could read them. We have three proclamations that we'll be handing out. We'll all be attending at least some of them. One is salute to military veterans, one is recognition of Virginia Latell, and one is recognizing Sparta Township Fire Department's 100-year anniversary. They will all be coming up within next month, right? Seventh, public hearing. This is the final adoption of ordinance 23-09. At a regular meeting held on October 11th, 2023, we introduced the first reading, the following ordinance which was advertised in New Jersey Herald, issue of October 18th, 2023, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. This is the ordinance establishing a mid-block crosswalk on Sussex County Route 644 at a point approximately 1,320 feet west of Church Street at plus or minus mile marker 0.79 within the township of Vernon. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. Is there anyone here tonight to be heard on this ordinance? All right, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. All right, I need a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second. Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, carries. All right, I need a motion that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post the same on a bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Any discussion on this? Still no?
Just need a motion.
Motion.
Need the motion.
Hayden?
Commissioner Hayden?
Second.
Commissioner Space? All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
All right. Eight is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor for public.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden's. Motions, moves, and Commissioner Fantasia, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. Anyone from the public on agenda topics?
What do you think? I'm Helen Heckman. I live in Newton, and I looked at the post session agenda and then mentioned the two words dearest to my heart, Dennis Library. So I was going to ask if there's anything you could share that's new with discussions about the Dennis Library. Have you made any decisions or are you making any progress?
What I will say is Commissioner Yardley was gone for a while, I think, as some of you may know, and he hasn't, well, I'm not sure if he's been able to look over all the paperwork that we have. That's why we're going to go into executive session.
I see. Are you pretty good?
My goal, again, I'll speak for myself, my goal is by next meeting, we're going to have an answer one way or another. And that's all I'm going to say for now.
Okay. Should we wait till the end of the session to see if you're not going to vote?
No, nope, we won't take any action. Next meeting, as long as everything goes right and our council has the information that we're looking for, I can't see it going past that meeting. That's the goal. That's my goal as director. Hopefully that'll work out.
Any other information you need that we can help you get or anything?
No, I had several pleasant conversations with Jennifer Nelson, the State Library Director. She's been very helpful communicating back and forth. I've emailed her, gotten some information. I'm going to be sending something to her and hopefully getting some stuff back to the commissioners for the next two weeks. But no, we've had a very nice dialogue up to this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your help, too. Anyone else? Agenda topics?
Wendy Whipple, Andover Township. I want to thank you all for the amount of work that you're putting in, because I know this is extra work and I know the people have been visiting the library branch. I wish I could contribute very much. And just a reminder, for those who may not know, the vote to accept the Dennis Library was approved unanimously with one abstention back in May of 2022. Obviously, several members of this body thought it was a good idea to acquire the building and to enter into a contract with the state at the time. It seems to me that if the county's original promise to contribute $3 million from the sale of the homestead can be approved by submitting a substantial change form and a suitable revised plan can be made, it is still a good idea. The state librarian has indicated to me that she is looking forward to reviewing the documents when they have been submitted, same as your council report. I'd like to ask you how the county would provide library service to 25,000 people without the use of the Dennis Library for less than the $3 million they promised to contribute, plus the $3 million that they owe the state. And at the last meeting, the acceptance of Dennis Library was compared to buying a car that didn't run. And with all due respect, I find this analogy to be difficult to accept. We believe the Dennis Library could be compared to a classic car of high value, which the county has been given and not purchased. In addition, the building is currently running, and there is an agency willing to give the county $3 million to fix it and make it run better. I don't know about you, but I have often driven used cars, as I didn't have the funds to buy a new car, often rationalizing that paying for car repairs was cheaper than buying a new car or doing without. We don't think that the County of Sussex should walk away from the funds that could be used to make the Dennis Library ready to serve 25,000 people.
One minute.
Renovating the building to the health of the state of New Jersey is in the best interest of the residents of Sussex County. Thank you very much. We look forward to getting back from the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Partiston? I just want to thank you ladies, because they're very passionate, and I actually went out of my way to go see where this library was, because I had never been to it. But I have two concerns. When the council, when the commissioners agreed to take over the library, they voted for them. So that was an open public vote standing, and there is minutes for it. That was a year ago. We're now September 29th of 2020, I'm sorry, May 11th of 2022. We paid an outside attorney to actually look into this and represent us as the council. My question is, did we pay that bill? Because apparently it was never completed, from what I can find out, from both the county and the ladies and my other people, who did I talk to? It was never completed with the DPO file that the county left. So we paid a lawyer to do that, from the county work. Was she paid for her services? Because she never completed her services. So why are we paying someone who didn't do their job? It's just something that...
Who, what, whose name is on that?
Ricky.
Riker Danzig.
Riker, yeah, Riker Danzig.
But that's not what was on the list. So if we paid it, what service did he get?
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. All right, can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. Number nine is commissioners' comments. Commissioner Hayden, you want to start?
Okay, Sussex County Library System, Wantage, New Jersey. Sussex County Library System extends its heartfelt gratitude to Sussex County Railroad Club for the spectacular Halloween train display showcase Saturday, October 21st at the Sussex County Branch, Sussex Wantage Branch. Spooky and delightful exhibits captivate visitors of all ages and added an extra dose of Halloween spirit to the festivities in the community. Sussex County Library System is excited to announce the Railroad Club's return to the Sussex Wantage Branch in December for two winter holiday train displays, always a favorite for the community, and the holiday display promises to be delightful and enchanting experience for all ages. So for further information, contact the Sussex County Library System at its website or your local branch, and anything with trains is always a good time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayden, Commissioner Space?
Division of Senior Services 23rd Annual Salute to Military Veterans. Senior Services will host the 23rd Annual Salute to Military Veterans Event at the Sussex County Fairgrounds located on Plains Road in Augusta on Sunday, November 5th, 2023 at 1:00 PM. The program will consist of a parade that will highlight veterans of all branches of the service, military vehicles, civic groups, community bands, and local high school bands. The tribute to our military veterans allows Sussex County to publicly recognize the contributions and sacrifices of our veterans and their families have made for our county. For additional information about this event, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1221, or email seniorservices@sussex nj.us, and that is always a very nice event, very well put on. Thank you, Lorraine Hens, for all your work every year to make that a nice day. Division of Community and Youth Services, there are two resolutions on the agenda this evening awarding two agencies opioid settlement funds to address substance abuse in Sussex County. The Center for Prevention and Counseling will utilize this funding to provide substance use prevention and early intervention programming for students in Sussex County schools. The Rescue Agency Public Benefit LLC will provide services for marketing and advertisements to increase community awareness of opioid use prevention and treatment services in Sussex County. To obtain information on substance abuse or help with finding treatment, contact Nick Luizy at the Sussex County Office of Substance Abuse and Alcohol at 973-940-5200, extension 1383, or email substanceabuse@sussex nj.us. Well, it's been a busy two weeks, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for the start of all of our budget meetings, and we did it, we're doing it differently this year. We all have separated, and instead of just two commissioners getting to hear everything, we each took a few days and, you know, we had four different, two were at nights, two were nights, and two were days, and we were meeting with all the different departments to hear things, and then we'll coordinate back, and I think it's a very good way to be transparent and for us to all be able to communicate and get this budget to where it needs to be to look out for the county's interests and the taxpayers. I also attended an Economic Development Partnership Awards Luncheon on Friday, and I would like to congratulate Commissioner Yardley for being a nominee for the longevity award. Thank him for everything that he's done for the county, and I had the opportunity sitting on the Economic Development Partnership to present an award to a local municipality, and that went to Andover Township. And I also visited and volunteered at the food pantry last Thursday, and the volunteers there are incredible. The truck comes every Thursday, and the amount of work that goes into keeping that food pantry running and the amount of food and donations, it's amazing. But we are short of food, and, you know, Commissioner Carney is in works of trying to set up some more programs for that. I also took the time to visit the Dennis Library with Ron and Christina so that I could get the full feel of the library, and I do, you know, sympathize with you, so, but that's all I'll say. You know, it's really a difficult position that we're all in, looking out for the taxpayers on top of, you know, the library, but I did need to see it myself. So that was good, and then I was really excited about what I did yesterday. I've been looking forward to the grand opening of the ShopRite in Sussex. I think everybody had to hear it the last few days. I couldn't wait for last night. So I attended that last night and this morning, and there were probably about 400 people, the ribbon cutting today, waiting to get into the store to shop. So it's nice to see a new business come into that area, so. That's above all, huh?
Very good. Thank you much. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. By way of the Health Department, COVID-19, the most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 Activity Level Report indicates two counties, Atlantic and Cape May, are at medium level, and the rest of us are still green. Variants remain the same as Omicron, and here in Sussex County, we're reporting about an average of 12 to 13 cases daily that are reported. Most of the time, we focus on the hospitalization reports. In September, we have had 24 hospitalizations. Now, by way of outbreaks, we've had 11 active COVID outbreaks, one in an acute care facility, four in our long-term care facilities, five in group homes, and one in a school. So again, seems to be prevalent in those communal settings. By way of the flu, as we approach flu season, emergency department visits associated with influenza-like illness are higher than last week, but lower than this week last year. Outpatient provider visits are higher than last week, but again, lower than this week last year. There have been zero confirmed flu-associated pediatric deaths thus far this season. No RSV or influenza A outbreaks are reported currently in Sussex County. Now, onto the Office of Mosquito Control, I'd like to talk about the Spotted Lanternfly Grant. If you are active online, you'll see that we applied for the Spotted Lanternfly Grant, and Sussex County did receive $25,000 for that program. As such, what we've done is we made these Spotted Lanternfly traps available to first commercial farms in Sussex County, and after that, now it's open to residents. So the following Saturdays, this upcoming Saturday and next Saturday, those traps will be available. If you secured traps over this past weekend, you must pick up your traps at the Office of Mosquito Control, 150 Morris Turnpike, Newton on the 28th, or November 4th between the hours of 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Now, I talked to Christine Florio on the weekend, and she told me upon us putting up that post, 169 people had signed up for traps right out of the gate.
And how many, I'm sorry, don't interrupt you. How many traps did you say that's in?
Residents can get two traps each you can sign up for. They said yesterday that they were all reserved.
They're all reserved?
As of now?
Yep, as of now.
Wonderful.
They're all reserved.
Okay, so no more walk-ins, but we're trying to get more.
We're trying to get more.
So we fast-tracked the resolution to go on at the next meeting. For, the state is going to be giving the county another $25,000 to purchase some more traps, which is phenomenal, because as of right now, they said 262 people have secured. So right out of the gate, we had 169, then 262 for, I think, 450 traps is what we had, right? Some more was assigned.
So we'll be getting another 25,000.
So, yeah.
It's good to know, too, those are reusable. It's not one and done, right?
Yeah.
You trap them, you dispose of your catch, and you can put them somewhere else or reuse them somewhere else as well.
Nice. All right. Nice to know that we've all rallied around getting rid of just...
Better than stumping on one of them.
Exactly.
They're fast, too.
They are. So I saw you could also take a water bottle, a wide-mouth bottle, and you put it over them if you can get behind them, and they automatically jump, but they jump back, and they've nowhere to go, and then they can't get out of the bottle. Because I also saw people down below in Vernon County doing that. So what are you doing? They had all these bottles and trapping them.
Here, I'm using a flamethrower in the bathroom.
Okay, so no flamethrowers are available to county residents. Mr. Hayden? Mosquito-borne disease surveillance. A total of 723 pools of adult mosquitoes have been submitted for mosquito-borne disease testing for this season thus far, which actually began in May. Since the beginning of August, 30 pools have tested positive for West Nile virus, two for Jamestown Canyon virus, one for McCrossancephalitis, and two pools for Eastern Echinoceratops. Cooler temperatures at night, mosquito activity is down, but it's still not completely gone because we're having that weird New Jersey October weather, where it's 70-some degrees during the day and 34 degrees where everything's frosting at night. So there is still a risk of disease, so the office urges residents to continue to follow all of the protocol that you always do if you're out during those hours and you see them flying about. So in response to the increase in the mosquito-borne detection of these pools, mosquito control program will continue to trap and test for areas throughout the entire month of October and continue to still test those problem areas. You can always visit the Office of Mosquito Control website, which is sussex nj.us, and then you just put a slash, then mosquito. So that's easy enough to find. Also, truck spraying in response to disease activity is pretty challenging when the weather gets cold at night. So it's going to be basically a door-to-door outreach when something is notified, because the cool weather is kind of jamming up traditional protocol that we have to follow. You okay?
I'm sorry.
All right. Next, I just wanted to give you an update from District 24, and there's just one thing of note that I like to mention, but something just prior to that, as Commissioner Space was talking about, the Economic Development Partnership awards. I know that Senator Oraho was honored as the 2023 winner of the Distinctive Leadership Award by the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership for his tremendous contributions in helping economic development throughout Sussex County and New Jersey. It was also quite a week for Senator Oraho, because this morning, the Mechanical Allied Crafts Council of New Jersey Annual Awards honored him as the 2023 Legislator of the Year for his contributions in supporting skilled trades and economic development across the state. He was also recognized by the New Jersey Food Council at their annual Good Government Breakfast. So again, it's nice to see, as Senator Oraho is planning for his retirement, that all of these agencies and organizations that he's helped throughout the years are, you know, recognizing the work that he's done, and also very proud of our Director of Technical Education over at the college that works in the McGuire Building, Jason Fruj. He's the Dean of Technical Education. He also was the recipient of an award of the Economic Development Partnership, so it's nice to see that the college and what their programs are are being recognized here in the county and across, almost like a cross-curricular kind of way, I suppose. And last, this is a little bit of a call to action to residents, and I've talked about this before, but the deadline is approaching. If you would care to make public comments. As you're aware, Senator Oraho, Assemblyman Space, and Assemblyman Worth have been very, very vocal against the governor's plan to mandate electronic vehicles by 2035. They fired off another, shall I say, feisty letter to the administration, you know, citing the obvious, that the green energy plan is extreme, expensive, unrealistic in the timeframe, that our state faces an affordability crisis, which now by removing the freedom of consumer choice and market competition is only going to drive costs up more. As you are aware, we are supposed to have 100% all electronic vehicles by 2035 in accordance with this plan. And again, you can see the letter online if you would like, that was fired up, fired off, it was fired up, but it was fired off. But more importantly, all New Jersey residents, you can submit your commentary to the DEP. You can go directly to the DEP website, so newjersey.gov/DEP, and it's under Rules/Comments. And by doing that, you can actually share your thoughts about the green energy plan proposed by the Murphy Administration. So again, please get that in as soon as you possibly can. And that is my end.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Deputy Director?
Okay. I attended Monday the financial review with Jill Space, sorry, Commissioner Space, and I think it was a long process, because we were here for Monday to, for going through each various budgets, and I think we're on our way, like she was saying, and I think it's a good process, Chris, how it's being done. There'll be a free cancer screening Tuesday, November 14th, at the Lifesaver Mobile Health Unit, will be at the Sussex County Fairgrounds, so that'll be on Tuesday, November 14, 12 to 6:00 PM. It's a free cancer screening. You can come over and have a skin cancer screening. Appointments are needed, so you have to call Public Health Nursing, 573-579-0570, extension 1275.
Okay.
So those of you that are older and spend a lot of time in the sun, not that younger people don't need to do this, but make sure you do it, because if you look, I know you can see red spots here, but you have to go to the dermatologist, and fortunately, if I can go, some people can. And if you go, catch things early, it's really, it's really one of those things that people tend to not address until it's too late. So this is an opportunity for a free screening. There were 116 inspections from the Health Department, Division of Health, 973 food establishments. There was a time when that, that number was maybe the total number of food establishments in the county, so a lot more now. There were 108 recreational bathing, 24 animals facilities, campgrounds, art, nine body art facilities, six tanning facilities, 21 youth camps, and 380 temporary food plan reviews, and 47 fixed food plan reviews. Fixed food plan reviews are generally new places opening up. So we have a lot of activity in Sussex County, and I think that's a good sign for employment in our residents. Rabies, there were 58 domestic wild animal bites reported, 24 dogs, 15 cats, three bats, raccoons, two, one groundhog, four unknown animals, seven animals were sent to the testing.
What?
I think that what happens is, people get bit and run, and they say, "I was bit by something, I don't know what it was." So it's one of those things where you don't know what it is. So, and seven people received treatments for rabies, that's the rabies, Gamma Gobion.
Gamma Gobion.
One more time.
Gamma Gobion.
Gamma Gobion. Gobion.
Mmm, Gobion.
Mouth, tongue, just one. But that's, that's because they were exposed, and maybe the animal, they didn't catch the animal, like this unknown animal, that person may be going through that treatment. That's why it's really important to be careful when those animals are out there. Center for Long Life Learning at Community College will have an educational presentation, and it's going to Center for Long Life Learning, it's a free presentation titled, President is Paradise, Harry Truman, Key West White House. And the presentation will be held at the Performing Arts Center on Friday, November 10th, from 2:00 to 3:00. So if you'd like to go to that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, too, went to the ShopRite Softail thing, I guess you'd call it, yesterday. It is a nice store. The only thing I don't like about it, if you guys have been there or not, was that light. They put a new stoplight in on Route 23. Not sure why they did that. I actually built that road about eight years ago, and they reconfigured all of 23. Thought it was odd, but, you know, good luck to them. It's nice to see that they have that store, and, you know, my wife was happy as well. And it'll bring a lot of employment to the... And it'll bring a lot of employment to the area and a nice rateable for Sussex itself. Yeah, the budget, as, as two commissioners said, or all of us, two commissioners said, I think went real well. I think it worked out real nice. Again, it's, everybody takes part of it, it gets to put their two cents in, so that was, that was nice. I, I think that worked out better than, at least I saw it.
Better than I saw.
And Christine and Lorraine, it, it went well, and we're on our way to start cutting that budget down. I appreciate that. I don't really have much, but I do have something that I've been working on for four months, and this is only because it was out of my hands, otherwise that's way too long for me. But if, if you've been to the Green, there's a, a small veterans park over there, and it has all the branches. And the only thing that it's missing, and this just got done, I believe I picked this up yesterday, was this. So my goal is to, will I see that? Came out real nice. My goal is to have this done up by Veterans Day. So we're looking to get a stone, this will be put, we have, we found an area that will be put over there, mounted, and then we can kind of do some, kind of like re-grand opening or, or whatnot. So that's a goal. Again, that was donated, I think it came out real nice. All right, we'll keep you posted on that as the time comes. And that was a loud box moving back here, Commissioner Fantasia.
I was thrown, I didn't know what that was about, but it's worth it.
You thought there was one of those animals that bite people?
The bite people.
No. That happened.
Unknown animal.
Unknown animal in the box. Nets.
Super copra.
That's all I, that's all I have. Number ten is approval of the consent agenda, there is none. Number eleven's the approval minutes, this is from regular meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meetings?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, Commissioner Yardley, seconds, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same carries. Number twelve is ordinance, there's one additional ordinance to be considered under item sixteen, financial. Gotcha. Yes.
They revamped with this whole Microsoft three sixty-five, this program that usually develops this, that's why that's in there. So it's just to, it's just a placeholder, just to kind of let you know, there's no other ordinance, we didn't put none, that it, there is one more under the financial section, that's all.
And that's how we're going to stick with it from now on?
They're working on it.
I like the working on it. All right, number thirteen's appointments and no resignations, there are none. Fourteen's are resolutions. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through U?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley, got a second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Space? Yes. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
All right, fifteen's awards of contract change orders or bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders or bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is and will further the public's interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through F?
So moved.
Commissioner Space, got a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Space? Yes. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
All right, sixteen's financial, two resolutions, two, duh, 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 duh. First one is payment of bills list from October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, motion to pay the bills list.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Space? Yes. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
All right, and B is amending the twenty twenty-three capital budget, motion to adopt resolution B.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Space? Yes. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
And C is introduction for first reading capital ordinance twenty-three dash ten. The capital ordinance providing for various improvements to roads and bridges in and for the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, and appropriating six million five hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred and five dollars, therefore, six million five hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and five dollars from grants received or expected to be received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation to pay for the cost, therefore. Motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for the first reading, also put same on a bulletin board in lobby of the County Administrative Center, together with notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-three, at six P.M., prior to final adoption. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Space, Commissioner Fantasia, seconds, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Space? Yes. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Number seventeen is personnel, this will be tabled, discussion for executive.
Administrator report?
Yeah, we don't have to mention that. Yep, eighteen is admin report.
All right, I don't think I can make land or flies or animal bites any more excitable tonight, so I'll leave that alone. I do want to thank, I do, I personally thank all the commissioners for all your efforts in the budget, the, to, to the, every employee that, that came and talked their business with you is, is excited for you to be interested in it, to see the detail in it. It's a lot going on in this budget, it's a lot of line items, it's a lot of activity the county's involved in, and it really comes together when we start talking about the budget and each one of those line items. But very appreciative of everybody's time, understanding, the questions you ask, all of that, it's a very good process. Speaking of the budget, I was at the statewide court, uh, meeting this morning, executive meeting, and we're waiting for two more insurance policies to come in, and then we'll know the total rate that we'll be receiving for our liability insurance. I just can't wait to see that number. And lastly, we participated in the Economic Development Committee meeting this past week, and it's, and it's always refreshing to be in, in that group, to see that there is still a lot of businesses, investors, that are interested in coming to the county. It's a lot of activity out there that is being worked on, it's, it's very exciting to watch. So with that, that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Just a question with the insurance. I know we discussed, we had Votech in here, so Votech's insurance went up twelve or fourteen percent.
That was their health.
Their health care insurance, yeah, so I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to see if they could lump on with us and the county college. So with that being said, I haven't talked to you since.
No.
Any, any headway on that?
I've given that to our broker, there might, there might be just some divisional way the county, the county has set up versus the college as well that might prevent us from doing that. But the question's been asked. We'd have to see what plans, it gets very tricky with health benefits because ninety-nine point nine percent of them are negotiated, and those plans are always something different, you know, from agency to agency, very rarely that are the same. So they'd have to be a, a fairly large evaluation to make sure that it meets their contract language, if, if we did anything like that. Most contract languages say if you're going to change, it's equal to or better, or some language like that. So that analysis has got to be made before we can, you know, even do any economics around it. But the question's been asked.
I have a question. What is their process on that? Do they do what we do where you solicit bids, or do they stay with the same company every year?
I don't know what the college does. I, I don't know what their process is. It sounded like, and as well as the tech school, it sounded like they stayed where they were. The tech school was in worse shape than the college. They, they stuck, and they went self-insured because they, nobody would bid on their work. Their, their rates are so high right now that nobody would bid on their, on their program.
So they're not in the, in the state benefits for their teachings?
Votech is.
Votech is.
They had to because of their claims, no other insurance would agree to take them, so they had no choice.
They didn't even get any bid request. So on our, on our account, we had, we had four bids on our account this year that was people interested in it, but Blue Cross and Blue Shield came back, they sharpened their pencils, which they needed to do. You know, four point three percent sounds like a lot, but loo- look around, that is, that's pretty, it's very, very good compared to what a lot of municipalities and the state system and everybody else is seeing right now.
Consider Nelka thought it was going to go up ten percent.
Yeah, yeah, we were.
That's what she was counting on.
We were counting on ten, and it came down to four point three, so.
All right.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. County Council?
My only update was my conversations with the State Library Director, we covered that, talking to these ladies, so.
Okay, twenty's unfinished business? Anyone? I have just one thing, and this goes back to you, Ron. I know we talked about a couple times, microphones are here so everybody could hear us. Where we at?
Capital, we put it in, this year's capital, we've gotten three bids to wire up audio and visual, and to get away from the projector so nobody gets a neckache to go that way. So you can look up here and see it, so that's in the capital, we have capital meeting November eighth.
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
So that's in there, we're ready.
We didn't forget, we didn't forget. All right, new business, anyone new business? I got some new business too, just because the proclamations that we've been doing lately. One particularly was Jeanie Latell, you know, she's done a, a big service, her and her family, her husband especially, for the county and the district and whatnot. And sometimes we forget all the good that people do. And I know Steve Oraho and Howhurst are resigning, take that back, retiring, wrong word, apologize, retiring at the end of the year. And I think that's something that we need to look into for a proclamation for both of those individuals. I hate to sit on that and, and wait, so while we can.
Can we have that done for the next meeting?
As long as you guys are good with that, I would love to get that done for the next meeting.
We could do that, it's a good idea.
Everybody good with that? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's?
Four meetings left?
I'd rather push it off till December, it's closer for myself.
We could do that, too. Want to wait, we could wait a little bit?
First meeting in December.
First meeting in December? Christina, you take care of that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you much. All right, number twenty-two is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same carries. All right. Is public, did I read that already? You read the statement.
The floor is open.
The floor is open.
I guess I'll take it then. Good evening, Alan Henderson, Lafayette Township. I'm here once again regarding the Pulse Report. As you're well aware, I brought your attention back in early September, and I've been going back and forth with Mr. Parrott. And I did get it, actually, I did receive a letter back on my second request from Mr. Parrott. I got a copy, it was mailed to Mr. Robert Kovich, Executive Director of Republican Club, it wasn't even addressed to me. So we talk about Daniel's law on protection, I got a zero on copy of somebody else's letter. It says in there, the Pulse Report, talk about elderly, we're going to go to elderly and I'll admit it. It says, "The Pulse Report being requested would provide updates for voter check-in during poll, polling, the early voting period, and during Election Day are not a requirement under New Jersey election law. These new Pulse Reports will be provided upon request at reasonable intervals during election period." So you assume they're coming. I got an email the following day from Ellen Griffiths, who is our Chair of the Board of Elections, who says, "Your recent email refers to the Pulse Report and desire for campaigns to have frequent updates reporting on Election Day. As Mr. Parrott mentioned in his earlier response, there are many considerations against producing this data on Election Day with Daniel's law." I just want to say, I've, I've got, I am totally confused whether this is something going to be provided or not, and I know it's not in your purview here, me standing in front of you, that it is the Board of, or the Board of Elections and the county clerk, because somebody should be able to give us an answer on this. And I know you're not going to tonight, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, but it's still not a resolved issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Rob Kovich, Art of Township. I just actually want to go a little further with that. Now, I'm also, I'm acting as the Executive Director of the Sussex County Republican League, and I sent Christina a letter, I'm not sure if it's there tomorrow. I sent the letter last month about these Pulse Reports, and I did speak to somebody, and I did get a response letter saying basically that the county clerk is not responsible for providing this information, or rather it's the Board of Elections, which you supervise and define, okay? They're going to try to help, the county clerk's office is going to try to help them provide us the information, but they're not really responsible, it's not really their responsibility to do that. I never got a response back from the Board of Elections or Ellen Griffiths, you know, I reached out a few times. I sent the letter yesterday with Oprah request to Christina, to the Board of Elections and to everybody else, because I need to know who is going to be responsible for getting us this information, okay? The Board of Elections never responded to us, we have an election around the corner, and it's making my responsibility that we have access to the information that we need for on Election Day, all right? It's, it behooves everybody here. So is somebody from your board going to follow through with the Board of Elections and make sure that they provide us this information? Because come Election Day, when everything is chaotic, who am I going to be calling and help, or holding accountable for not providing this information? They told us we'll get to it, we'll get to it if we get to it. I can't use this at eleven o'clock at night on Election Day. Can somebody commit to following through on this, please, with the Board of Elections and get back to me if possible, so we can really organize this and have a dependable program in place for Election Day? I appreciate the clerk's office trying to help, but it's really not the responsibility, and I don't want finger pointing happening on Election Day. That's all I want. And can somebody please reach out to them and to me and let me know what you need from me as well, make this thing happen? I just want one clarification, counselor, that they don't, the board's not supervised by this board. As you know, the election board members are actually appointed by the, the political parties. So one way to hold the members accountable would be the ones that are appointed by you or Republican Party or the Democratic Party, if they're not working with you guys, might be to ask them to be a bit more responsive to you guys. But beyond that, they're, they're an autonomous board, but the, this board may set their salaries, they're, they're not supervised by these folks. Why they might approve the hires, they're also recommended by the Board of Elections members, too. But as you well know, in your capacity, and I know, having been a county chairman for twenty years, as well as an attorney, those board members are actually nominated by the, the political party chairman of the two political parties. And I did speak to my board members who had no idea that any of this was going on, they never got the letters, it was never provided, it's not what I told them about. Those board members who likewise select the, that they're, the, the head of the Board of Elections should be able to set that policy or talk to their Board of Elections, the, the head of the Board of Elections here and tell them that that's something that they want done. I know in my neighboring county, I have a good working relationship with our election board and my election board members, so, you know, maybe something you might want to take up with, with your chairman, maybe he can talk to your board member, too. With the public information officer here, is there no connection between the board of commissioners and the, and the Board of Elections? Other than? Other than you paying them, I mean, there's, there's no, nobody who can reach out, say, you have a member of the public and other people interested in getting this information or getting this thing done, right? They're not responding. Yeah, but again, I'll certainly, I can have a conversation with the, the, the head of your election board, but I would encourage you guys to talk to your board members, maybe the Democratic members to talk to theirs. But, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll do that much, I ain't going to help do that much. But as I said, they're, they're an autonomous board of their own. Hopefully you can, I mean, that's all I want, is to make sure I get in touch with somebody and have a discussion about how to best do this. Well, again, I don't know who your Board of Elections, your Republican Board of Elections members are, but I bet it's the Executive Director of the Republican Party, you do,
members are, but I bet it's the Executive Director of the Republican Party you do, so.
Yeah, it's, uh, different words, Alan Lander, I spoke to them, but I need to speak to Ellen Griffiths, who doesn't get back.
Gotcha.
So that's all I'm asking.
You got it. Thanks, counselor.
I'm paying for a recording again, and I'm not actually sure who I should address this to, but October 13th, and maybe actually a lawyer can answer, my mother received the letter, she unfortunately had to go to Bristol-land, she originally lived in Hamburg, and she actually worked as a poll worker at Hamburg, so she's been a registered voter for years, so she moved to the area after my father unfortunately has to die. She received a letter on county letterhead, and I don't know if you're aware of this, from something called the Sussex County Skyline Ride, who is that?
That's a transit system.
Transit.
Transit.
To our valued rider, she's never used it. Included in this envelope is a voter registration form and a voter registration opportunity form. You are receiving this voter registration information as the result of the National Voter Registration Act of 1993, which became law January 1st of 1995. Under this act, all state agencies that provide public assistance for state-funded programs are required to provide the opportunity for register to vote. It came on county letterhead, the letter goes on, from somebody named Nicholas.
Capitanakis.
I appreciate you saying that. And it's a very nice letter, don't get me wrong, but it came with a voter registration, she's already a Sussex County voter, and an application. Was the county aware that these letters went out? I find it a little unusual that it wouldn't come out from Jeff Parrott's office, it came out from the Skyline's Ride, and on county letterhead. Almost like the thing is it might be part of the requirement of the state funding that you get, or for Skyline's Ride, that it might be one of the requirements for them to help you vote?
But they know there's a change of address, it's probably not to help her register to vote, but it changed her address.
No, it literally says to vote, to register.
So, so.
It's the same form.
Not to cut you off, yeah, if you can get us a copy, because now I'm interested.
I literally just got it this morning from my mother, because she's in Bristol-land, a little confused.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And she kind of runs everything.
It's gonna be tied to some state or federal funding.
And that's how I got it.
So I'm curious, and so we're gonna find that answer out, because now we need to know.
Actually, that would help me out a lot.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I actually have to work. Do you need a copy of the envelope?
These guys will look into it, as will I, I'm sure it's tied to some sort of state or federal funding that goes to them.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's tied to some sort of state or federal funding that they're required to do that, but we'll look, I'll definitely look into it, but not a whole heck of a lot different than the, the state now requires when you go to motor vehicle, every time you do something, they try to solicit you to, to register to vote, too, even if you apply for an ID, it's, it's, it's.
Well, I actually tell you, during the presidential election, my daughter just registered, changed her registration for voter ID to Massachusetts, where she moved to, she went to college, and it was our home.
Yeah.
She got three separate voter rep, she got one in Maryland, Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, where she was a student.
She had already moved to New York City, and registered there, got one in New York City, and she got two from Jeff Parrott here.
Well, yeah. Um, anyway.
All right.
We'll look at it after the meeting.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else? I just want to touch on one thing, Mr. Kovach, I will talk, I'll have our Chief of Staff talk to Ellen and, and just, you know, I, I don't, there's, I mean, if, it's a good question, there's no reason for somebody not to answer it, so we will, we will see what's.
Understood.
Understood, as Doug said, I think that's a good idea, it's a good start, but I, I would like to know myself why we're not getting back to our public, and, you know, maybe she's busy, maybe she's on vacation, I don't know that, um.
I do have a copy of the email communication, so I'll reference that.
Can I come in on that?
Come in, um.
You're talking to Mrs. Griffiths, I did talk to her the other day, I finally followed up, kept calling her until I got, she's adamant, she's not doing, she told me her office is way too busy to complete this job, they're doing hundreds of calls a day from poll workers at the polls, she told me she'd never heard of the poll script, I told her I had contacted Monmouth, Passaic, Essex, and Warren.
We all do it.
All of who do them.
Warren, is it?
They're absolutely not doing, she's not doing it.
Aren't we electronic?
I'm sorry?
Aren't we electronic when the data comes back? Isn't that what we're, we're talking about, or?
Yeah, so, again, well, we're gonna have to make some calls tomorrow, that's all I can say to you, really, I mean, that's just to me, you know, people, you know, you're taxpayer, people should get answers, as long as it's a good question, don't get me wrong, you know, frivolous questions, we don't need, but, all right, we'll take care of it. Um, was there anybody else before we close? All right, motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same carries. All right, please remember, please check the county's website, www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Is there anything else that's going on, commissioners? I know there's been like Cardigan Day, Lafayette Day, all these days, nothing that we're missing, right?
Parkinson has a veterans ceremony next Saturday, but I don't know the time, I can't.
There's, um, and I had, I had texted the board about a bunch of different veterans things on the.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on.
Daisy candlelight vigil tomorrow.
Do we have any word information about that? Chris and I, we went last year.
Yes.
I haven't received any.
Oh, I thought Christine Florio sent it out, I'll ask her to read forward.
Thank you. Yeah, looks today, and, okay. See, but.
Yeah.